... prayer, we got Pastor Bob Cookson, I know he's here, I just gotta see him. And we're gonna do the prayer, then we're gonna do the pledge, so if you would, please stand.
Thank you for coming.
Please pray a little bit. Father, we thank you again for the gift of this day and the love that you share with us, not that we deserve it, just simply because you love us, to help us to understand what it means to love others the same way that you love us. We pray for wisdom tonight from all of the individuals who are here, and we pray, Father, for the Spirit that only comes through you, of what it means for us to be in one. We thank you for that gift of life and love that you share, we thank you for being able to be citizens in this country, more specifically in this city, and we pray, Father, that we would reflect the love that you have for us with one another in all that we say and all that we do, and we give you all the glory and honor for these things I ask in Christ's name, amen.
Thanks Pastor, thanks for coming tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, we have roll call?
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor President Foster.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Robles.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Mann.
Here.
Councilmember Aco.
Here. All right, we're all here, and now we're all accounted for. So with that, we've got our first order of business is a proclamation for Mental Health Month, and I see Ms. Peacock out there, so I know I've got some mental health representative here tonight, so we're gonna start, I'm gonna read it real quick. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health, whereas there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being, whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas effective treatment, those individuals and mental health conditions can recover and lead full productive lives, whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has responsibility to promote mental health wellness and support prevention efforts. Therefore, I Chuck Allen do hereby proclaim May 2017 as Mental Health Month in Goldsboro, North Carolina, as Mayor, I call upon all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Goldsboro to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps that our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. I will say I'm certain without a doubt, this doesn't get enough attention by our city, our county, or our state, but it's a big deal that we probably all need to work more on, and Ms. Peacock, would you like to say something?
I would just like to say a word, please. We thank you for the time and recognition, our mental health association has been around since 1962, and we still work to help improve the situation of our citizens with mental health issues. We are having an event on the 16th at Wayne Community, opioid abuse is a national epidemic, I think you've been hearing about this. I will leave these posters with her to circulate, if you would, to make mention that we'd like everybody to be at Wayne Community next Tuesday from 6 to 8. Thank you very much.
Let me get a picture with you in our parking lot.
Oh, of course.
Are you our picture taken? I've known this lady since I was a little baby. She ain't that old. He only said that because he's that old. Thanks for your time. Mr. Mayor, where you're coming from? With that, I was in such a hurry to get moving, I skipped over our approval of the minutes from our last meeting, so we're gonna back up one step and get to the approvals of minute and the work session for our meeting of February 20, 2017. I mean, we approved the minutes. Any discussion? All favors signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. All right, so the next thing, we're gonna go back to presentations, and we have the Goldsboro Golf Course, and I guess Byron, and whoever else is gonna come with the golf course, or is it just you?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
I'd like to thank y'all for your time, and we are, Mr. Doug Safford is actually the chairman, I know it says on there that I am, and Mr. Doug Safford is the chairman, and I'm the secretary of the advisory committee for the golf course. Doug is our president, our vice president is ill, he's not here, but we do have some other members, and thank you for the opportunity, and I understand that there's been some discussion on rate increases, and the gentleman may ask some questions, I know some of you went out this morning and talked to some of the members about the rate increases, and our basic understanding in our committee, since we've been in meetings, we've had three sessions now, and a quarterly session, we've had three, has been to eliminate large ticket items coming to the city council. We've made some progress in that, we eliminated a need for a $50,000 outdoor restroom, we eliminated the need for a $10,000 fix on a fairway by just making a local rule, your money, the city's money, is in our interest, just as it is in yours. The $150,000, or $100,000, whatever the number has come out to be deficit, what we feel is a way to try to bring that in and to rein that in is, of course, the rates will probably need to increase, but we feel that if we take the rates that we currently have, and I don't know if you were provided those rates, right now we have a single rate of $720, that's also for a family, so a single gentleman lady who come in to play golf pays $720 a year, well, so does an individual that brings four people with them. So we've come up with a rate plan that's more like the other municipals in the state of North Carolina, and that is to have a single rate, a family rate, obviously a senior rate, because face it, we do have seniors, and I'm proud to be one, I get to eat at IHOP and get the discount, and then the military rate, which I think, I believe is in the city's best interest to have a military rate. And we have rates, and if you haven't been provided this, I would like to give this to you as soon as I can, but those rates we feel should be effective one July with the new budget. We also feel as a committee that if we take those rates and apply those across the board to every member today, next year, we're gonna be standing here talking about a $200,000 deficit. So the question would be, or the request would be, is that for our existing members, that we take the current rates and apply those current rates to them in the retreat next year, which I got to attend just for the golf course portion, the parks and recs portion this year, that we sit down and we talk about, do we need, have we closed that deficit? Have we moved that down in the right direction? If the answer is no, then we need to apply across the board. So that's our presentation to you, again, I thought maybe you had gotten this information, but I would be glad to get this to however, Mr. Stevens, or to Scott, maybe Scott can forward that over to you guys, but this would be, this would be our proposal as the Golf Course Advisory Committee. Yes, sir, absolutely. And willing to answer any questions that the council may have.
Well, as you said, some of us did meet out there this morning, and we did talk to your members, and so we'll take what they said, what this said, what Scott says, we'll put it all together, we've got between now and when we adopt our budget.
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure the numbers will be somewhere in between all of this.
Yes, sir.
But we will work on it to see what we can do.
And that's all we can ask, or I'd say, so, thank you so much.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right, public hearings, we have none, public comment periods, the first person we have on our public comment is Mr. Carl Martin.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
Members of the city council.
Good evening, sir.
May I approach the bench?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Carl Martin, I live at 801 South Main's Place. I was a member of the Goldsboro Municipal Golf Course. I decided to give up playing golf on a regular basis at the end of 2015 because of health concerns. I heard complaints that the golf course was losing money, and the city had to pay golf course expenses to keep it open. When I discontinued playing golf on a regular basis, I decided to spend my spare time learning about city government. I attended city council meetings and read the meeting agendas and attachments. My attention was drawn to the golf course section of the Goldsboro Parks and Recreation Department's monthly reports. They indicate that in 2015, the golf course had an average monthly loss in excess of $10,000. In 2016, the average monthly loss increased to almost $16,000, and the loss during the first six months of fiscal year 2016 to 17 was $136,903, or an average of $22,817 a month. A copy of the report with those statistics is listed as Exhibit 1 in your handout. The large increase in the golf course was alarming, and I sought information from the city on the golf course membership from 2010 to 2017. In response to my request, I received the information that's listed in Exhibit 2 in the handout. It was noted that there are very few members listed from 2010 to 2015. Membership rebounded in 2016, and membership rose sharply in 2017. My name is listed as a member in 2016 and 2017, when in fact, I was not a member. My name was not listed as a member in 2014, when in fact, I was a quarterly dues-paying member. Those irregularities led me to doubt the accuracy of some of the numbers that were reported on the golf course membership and revenue. I continued my research and requested a list of names, addresses, and membership type, regular and family, senior, active and retired military, or juniors, for the 2017 golf course members, and all the members who are not currently in payment, not current, in payment of their quarterly membership fees in 2016. I received and reviewed the April 11, 2017, Goldsboro Municipal Golf Course Membership Roster Report. It's listed as Exhibit 3 in your handout. And April 15, 2017, the News August reported that Lawrence Merritt did a study of the ratio of city versus non-city golf course members, and found that 68 of the 196 members were city residents. Since the completion of his study, there has been a reduction in the total number of members, and members who are city residents. In the News August article, Scott Bernard, Director of Parks and Recreation, estimated the ratio of city versus non-city golf course members to be in the area of 60% city residents and 40% non-city. His estimate is nowhere near the current ratio of city versus non-city members. According to the April 11 Membership Roster Report, membership is down to 187 members, of which 49 are residents of the city of Goldsboro, 26.2%. 81 residents in Wayne County, 43.3%. 51 are residents in cities other than Goldsboro, 27.3%, and there were five members whose residency could not be determined. The ratio of city versus non-city golf course members is now in the area of 26% city, 74% non-city residents. I was advised that the city could not provide a report on the golf course members who are not current in payment of their dues for the first quarter of 2017, because the current software does not allow backtracking of payments. I was provided instead with a report of golf course members who are not current in the payment of their dues as of April 13, 2017. That raises questions and doubts as to whether the golf course has been recording and reporting accurate information on the revenue received and members' fees. The April 13, 2017, general municipal golf course membership roster report I received is listed as Exhibit 4 in the handout. The balances highlighted in yellow and oranges are for members who have not paid the dues for the second quarter 2017 by the April 1 date. Any member with a zero balance is paid for the second quarter 2017. Anyone with a negative balance has a credit and that amount towards future payments. There are 35 members on the report who are delinquent in paying their dues for the second quarter 2017. If the second quarter 27 fees were not paid within 30 days from the April 1, 2017, by rule, they are ineligible for reinstatement for one year from the April 1 forfeiture date. The report also indicates that in the two days from April 11 to April 13, membership is down from the 187 figure to 183. During discussions of the golf course and the April 18 work session, there was agreement made to raise rates effective July 1, 2017. There was no estimate given by Scott Bernard, or agreement made on how much the recommended rate increase would reduce the average monthly loss, and by when. I urge that realistic loss reduction goals and timelines be established for the golf course. I strongly urge the city council, consider, discuss, and agree upon a golf course management exit strategy. To exit the golf course management business, to agree upon loss reductions are not timely. To exit the golf course management business, if agreed upon, loss reduction goals are not met timely, and to put better controls in place to monitor the financial record-keeping for the golf course, and the accuracy of the data entry of the golf course information. It is not in the best interest of the property damage-paying, or property tax-paying city residents and businesses to continue funding the financial losses of the golf course, while our deteriorating storm water drainage system is in need of desperate repairs, and the city's residential water and sewage customers will likely to be required to pay for the repairs through a monthly $4.50 to $5.50 fee assessment. The funds the city has paid, the city has paid over the last 17 years to cover the financial losses at the golf course could and should have been used for maintenance on our storm water drainage system. The funds the city has created over the last 17 years to cover the financial losses at the golf course could also have been spent to pay for maintenance of our city neighborhood streets, which are crumbling from lack of maintenance and pothole repairs. I strongly urge that the city council to make decisions that are best, in the best interest of city residents and businesses, rather than the best interest of a small population of golfers, the majority of whom are not city property taxpayers. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for all your effort. I will equally say to you, Mr. Martin, we're gonna take what you gave us as well, and when we do the budget, this will all come out in the budget. Okay, so with that, we're gonna open the public comment period to anyone, if anybody else would like to speak, you have up to three minutes to come up and speak. If you would, give the clerk your name and address, please, ma'am.
My name is Bessie Yarborough, Bessie Yarborough. I live at 1104 Berry Street, and I have two short things that I'm concerned about. Every time it rains, we have Franklin Street down from Berry Street, and there's a little dip down there, there are four homes down there, 819 Franklin, 816, and 818, and 821. The water stands there all night long, and the people come by and drive, and the mosquitoes are coming, and kids around there, and you know, that could become a health hazard, because the mosquito bring the germs, and we have old people and young babies, you know, it could create a health problem. Another one of my concerns is that I have volunteered, I've worked in City Ward 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, and back in 2008, I had a problem. As we would go to try to get out the vote, and put our flyers out in the apartment complexes, a lot of time we get run off, and all of you are going to need some help in the future. So if, while you're working on your budget and have some extra money, could you please find some kind of solution where you could, I don't know, communicate with the people and let us get in there so we can put out a flyer that you're running for in office, so you can get some votes, and so we get more votes out? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Is Franklin Street the same one we're talking about?
Yeah, same one I've been bringing up.
So that's the same one we're working on, like, same spot?
I believe so, Mayor, but I need to confirm it.
It is, because same one I met you in a couple times.
So Ms. Yarborough, just so you know, this has been brought up before, and there's like four lines out there, there's a question of are the lines undersized, which is one question, the other question is, several lines were stopped up. We have, we know that we have three of the four lines clear and flowing now, there's one more line that's still got blockage in it that we're still got, we're probably got to dig up and replace, but we are working on that, our public works is working on that. We went out the other day, the water is flowing, it's not flowing all that it should, but we are aware and we are working on that, so if you will convey that to your neighbors, that would be appreciated. Anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir. I got this gentleman in the yellow first. I got you first. If you will, give the clerk your name and address, please.
John Davis, 213 Worth Drive, I am not a resident of the county, or the city.
Okay.
However, I am a member of the golf course, that's what I want to approach. It's my place of recreation, it's my place of socialization with all my friends that I play golf with, and have become associated with. I think it needs to be funded, I think it needs to be, if anything, reduced so that we can get more members. That's the problem, getting members to the golf course, new members, not adding on to the burden of increasing prices. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I don't know if I can do this in three minutes or not, I probably can't. Our house was flooded back on October 8 of last year, for the second time, first time in September 1999. This time, it was totally wiped out, and anyway, we are moving, we moved to Goldsboro, we live in the back of a parking lot at 3,000 East Ash Street, which is my wife's hairstylist salon that we've been trying to sell, but we hadn't been able to sell it, so we had a place to put the trailer, so FEMA let us stay there, and of course, the city gave us the right to stay there. But after we came up here, my wife, one day was washing some clothes in our beauty shop, and the washing machine ran over, the commode began to run over the commode, and the sink, and water was throughout the shop and on the floor, and so I got a plumber to come out, we thought maybe our line had been clogged up, so he spent a couple hours trying to work on the line with his rotor thing, and also with the camera, and couldn't find anything wrong with the lounge. So he suggested we call the city, and I asked him, what would the city have to do with it, and he said, well, the sewer taps probably stopped it. So I called the city, and they had some gentleman come out there in a big truck, parked out in front, blocking traffic. Neither one of these men knew anything about a sewer tap. They walked around out there, and I asked him, what were they doing? He said, they were trying to find some rushing water. I said, well, I don't think that's the problem, we got a sewer problem, the sewer stopped it. So they left, and about an hour later, some, another man came out, I had to leave for a while. When it came out, there was a hole in the front yard behind the water meter, and I saw something I hadn't seen in 30 years, called a sewer tap. So it's my understanding, these sewer taps are supposed to be cleaned out on an annual basis, but it's the first time I've ever seen it. We've been out there since 1987. So anyway, I had to pay the plumber $185, $135, I'm sorry. He gave me $170 off because our house had been flooded, to help us out, seeing any plumbing from Mount Olive. And after it was over with, I said, you know, I really feel like that this, the city's liability to reimburse me the $135. So I called up here, and I eventually talked to Mr. Stevens, and he said that he didn't think they were liable, and I said, well, I feel like that you are liable, because it's your property, it's on your line, it's on the city, right away, it's not in our yard, it's behind the meter. And anyway, after many, many calls up here to talk to Mr. Stevens, he finally had his secretary call me one day and tell me that he would pay $67.50. So I asked him, who is he? I said, Mr. Stevens. I said, out of his pocket, or is this coming out of the city? She said, I don't know. I said, well, I don't really feel like that I can take $67.50, I feel like it should be at least $135, reimburse me for my problems. Well, he said that, no, that couldn't be done, that he couldn't do that. So anyway, it went on and on and on, and this has been going on now since October 26 of last year. That's when it started, that's when I wrote the check for $135. And I've been calling up here ever since then, that's what, six months? Finally, Mr. Stevens tells me that he's going to turn it over to the insurance company, and let them make the decision. And so evidently, they did, I've got a letter right here, I don't see anything on here about insurance, it says, alternative services concepts out of Nashville, Tennessee. Well, nobody ever called me. So it went on and on and on for another month or two, so I finally called up here again, and they said, I should be getting response any time now. Well, about a week later, a lady called me, and told me that wanted me to go through the whole thing all over again about what happened, so I did, and when I got through, she said, Mr. Stevens, we appreciate you taking care of this for me, said, I don't know what to do now. I said, what do you mean, you don't know what to do now? She said, well, I can understand the situation. I said, you didn't understand the situation before now? She said, not really. I said, my goodness, I thought Mr. Stevens had written you a letter. So anyway, this is a copy of the letter where they turned me down, please be advised that after careful review and consideration of the above referenced claim, on behalf of our client, we must respectfully deny liability in this instance. There was no negligence on the part of the insured, therefore, they cannot be held responsible for this loss. Well, that's one of the biggest lies I've ever had, that anybody confront me with, this is an absolute lie. And Mr. Stevens has misled me for six months. He told me six months ago that he was gonna get this thing straightened out, he offered me $67.50, and I said I wouldn't take it, but I called back the next day and told him I would take it, and he reneged and said he couldn't pay it, that he turned it over to the insurance company. So I just wanted to let y'all know.
Can I see that bill?
That there's a lot of, sir.
Can I see that bill?
Yeah.
Your bill.
Oh, the bill?
Yes.
Well, it's not the money, as much as it is the principal, there is no principal. Now, Mr. Stevens makes thousands of dollars, millions of dollars have been spent out here on landscapes, millions of dollars have been spent on buildings all over this place, $135 for a flood victim. I mean, that to me is a height of sorrows.
I'm sorry that happened to you, sir.
Sir?
I'm sorry that happened to you.
Well, I appreciate it, but I don't think I've gotten any feelings from this man over here. I think he thinks about himself, that's about it. I just wanted to let y'all know about this.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
For coming out.
Hello, good evening. But I do want to make my point, because last time I didn't do a very good job, and it's the quality of life that I'm concerned with for some of the constituents in Goldsboro, if that makes sense. And let me phrase it to you this way, I was running the numbers, and if it's true that 25% of the population is within a poverty rate, then that means- then that means that's a quarter of the population. That means somebody should ask the question, is there an economic strategic team in place to help bring jobs to Goldsboro? Because as I find myself driving down Berkeley, I see a lot of restaurants. And what I can deduce about restaurants is that you make somewhere between $10 and $11 an hour. And if you make $10, $11,000 an hour, you only make about $10,000 to $11,000 a year. Therefore, you'll stay well within that poverty rate, which is a problem, right? So I, the question is, if you have an economic strategic team in place to, uh, help out with that. Now, I do want to address some of the things I did not get to rebuttal last time we was here, unfortunately. The first thing is, using your age as an excuse not to do homework is a problem. My son is eight years old, and he said, because I'm eight years old, I don't want to do my homework. So I have to correct that attitude so he can go through life with an understanding. So in order to understand, you must study, and that's important. Now, something that you said that your father or maybe your grandfather helped build Goldsboro so people can, uh, work together. But what I find to be true is the amount of disrespect that comes from a statement like that, because it's almost as if the African population has been neglected for some time here. An example would be, I talked to some of the older people in the community. They said they remember times where they couldn't cross lines, or they should not go to this side of town and X, Y, and Z. So they had a hard time. And as I look at some of the young guys here, they have even a harder time when they go to, uh, when they go to school and the buildings are dilapidated. I remember you making a statement that I had read in the newspaper here on September 20th, written by Denise Hill, that you want to change the perception of the schools here. In order to change that perception, you definitely will have to fund the school. Maybe you can put pressure on the school board to do something. Now, as far as having a solution to the problem, there's people in the community who definitely have a solution, but they do not want to work as a team, meaning we have our solution and we're working towards our goal. And we expect y'all to have a solution to the economic problem and work towards your goal. And maybe we may meet in some, uh, common ground in the middle, maybe. But until those things happen again, the question is, what can be done? What's being done to raise the quality of life of the constituents in Goldsboro? Seventeen, that's good, that's good. I'll take it at seventeen. Appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? Yes, sir. If you will give the clerk your name and address.
I'm a member of the golf course here.
Yes, sir.
And the only thing that I want to say, and I've talked to people here, this thing should be run like a business. One of the things that I've heard, we have tournaments out here that the golf course collects zero dollars from. It won't get it well, but it would go a way to say, we're trying to do something. And if you're not going to try to run it like a business, and I think these tournaments are probably well thought of, have a lot of people that show up, but if you're not going to run it like a business, there's no need to keep taxing the people. But if you try to, to do something to cut the cost or to raise more revenue, then, uh, hopefully, it would be that we're doing something and go a long way to, uh, just bringing it to a closure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak?
Good evening, everyone. How are you doing? Um, I do just want to publicly let you know, last week when I read that letter, no one authorized me to read that letter. I read that letter on my own without asking anyone else, okay? So there's no one else who was responsible for that. The reason why I did that, uh, my father grew up in this city. I'm 35 and here my whole life. Um, as a young person my whole life, all I've heard is stories of, um, how my dad would get chased down the street at eight years old by white men calling him nigger. How people in my community couldn't go to Herman Park Center because black people weren't allowed there. How my grandma had to walk to work and be scared that she would get raped or somebody would hurt her because she was a black woman. I've listened to my neighbors. One of the first women to graduate from Goldsboro High School in that black class say, you know what, I couldn't get a job for the city because the black mayor said, I can't hire a black girl. That wouldn't look good for me. When I read that letter, you know how many black people came to me and said, oh, you're going to get in trouble, you're going to make them white people mad? The mentality, why do they feel like we can't be honest without making you mad and then you making a decision that's going to affect what? My quality of life. You don't understand how it feels to be a young black person. I was a straight A student, but I still dropped out of high school. Why? Because of the system that's in place, that no one chooses to do anything about. Mr. Stevens, I see you smiling, but what I want you to really understand is that maybe you didn't see it, maybe you didn't feel it, but I still feel it every day. Because I work hard to try to take care of my family and do what's supposed to be done. And you all are leaders, so you have the opportunity to change the systems. I don't care what the policy say. You can change them. That's what you're here for. You're not here to just sit here and say, I got a job and I'm somebody here. When you look at the whistleblowing policy, come on, let's be honest. If I work for you, I'm going to be really scared to really say what I really think. Half the people in this room don't say what they really think nowhere because they're scared of what's going to happen to them. And they're so honest. And you guys have to stop playing this game with people like you don't know what people talking about. You know good and bad, go well what we talking about. And you know you do. Because how can you hire a police chief with a high school diploma but not a black man with a master? When you have a 60% black community, the black man couldn't understand them? You're not trying. Have you read the books I gave you? Post-traumatic slave syndrome? Have any of you other guys even listened to the YouTube videos? Have you went and talked to any black constituents? To really find out, there's black people everywhere in all these, all of them. And your body language. I look at how you sit in the meetings, the way you're sitting right now if you took a real class, you know, that's highly disrespectful. The way you look away when we're talking. You can't deal with a lot of times Mr. Antonio and Mr. Bevin because they're black men. And what have you been training your perception to think of black men? And this is how all of us really do feel, except for the ones who've gotten a good job, and I dare not say nothing to you because I want to keep my stuff. I ain't got nothing to lose, and that's real. You know why? There's people getting thrown out of their jobs. Don't talk about being too black, don't talk about being African. Don't bring that up. Even at the forum, why is having locks not a good look for a job? This is my natural culture. Why is this a problem? And it's a problem everywhere we go, and you can't deny it. I'm sorry, but America has never been great for African Americans. There's not one year I can name where something great was happening for us. But we helped build this country on our backs. We can go to Wayne County Library and look at all this stuff that the black people in this community helped do. A lot of my family worked for a lot of your families. And we can trace those back. Your families wouldn't have million dollar companies if my families didn't give everything they had to work for y'all. Stop playing with us. I'm young. I didn't see white people beat us down. See, my parents have a different sense of fear. The older community has a different sense of fear because they saw people get hung. I didn't see it, but I'm mad and I'm tired, and so are a lot of other people. So please, stop acting like you don't understand what we're talking about. There is a problem. And it's the root of everything. No one really wants to understand each other. And everybody is trying to deny everyone else. And that's just how it is right now. And I think as a city council, like, please, stop acting like it's not real. Everybody has their perceptions of being through things, everybody has their prejudices. But I think the biggest prejudice is admitting that you're not admitting you have a problem. You cannot solve a solution until you properly assess it. And you have not properly assessed the African American community. And I would like for you to really take the time to do that because it's beyond tired right now. It hurts. It hurts to be disrespected. It hurts that we got to pay our taxes, and you keep playing us like we are part of this city, but everything we do, you take it, make it yours, and act like we never had a part of it. Yes, we get upset because you know what? Our black children need to see us in front of them talking, being someone. That's what shows them who they supposed to be next. When they don't see that, it's a problem. And when you look at little stuff, the WA Foster, like, that building was so historical for us. Do you know, in the 1920s, that was one of the first buildings donated for the Negroes in the county? And then you don't even care to spend money to take care of it. James Street was our street. No one has tried to save that historically, but every other historical building in this city, you make sure it's saved if it has some wells on it. But what about Dr. Hayes and them, the first doctors in Wayne County? Nobody decided to make that a historic site? We are part of this city, but we don't see us as a part of this city. And it's not our own fault. We feel hopeless. The trash is from the trash that's on the inside. You ain't never going to stop trash from building these streets till you clean up the inside of your hearts and treat people like humans. That man right there just made a point. Why are you building $3 million buildings, but you can't help somebody who lives in your city? Who makes your city what it is? You can't give $10 to somebody, but you got $1 million to build a sports complex to do what? Everything and about money. Everything and about money. I think we're worth more than money. I think humans are priceless.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
How y'all doing?
Good evening.
Um, jobs in schools. I know we done had this conversation several times. Y'all have had it, heard it several times and everything. Jobs in schools are very important, especially in our community. You know, we, we asking to do what you can do, but we see you can't do nothing because you're not doing nothing with the schools that's here. Goldsboro High School, several other schools, you're not doing enough. We, we need, we, we want y'all to do more jobs. This city is awful. We got to ride to Raleigh Wilson and whatever to get a job that's paying halfway decent. But hey, subtract it from gas. You know, jobs in schools, until it start affecting y'all, y'all not going to care. Y'all really not going to care. And when I say affecting y'all, this is the people that's not able to get the education they want, need to get, and not able to get the necessities of life. When they start coming and they start taking from y'all, then it's going to affect y'all. But y'all gotta, y'all gotta do it better. I mean, this is the time right now. Everybody coming up here saying the same thing. That's $180. Everybody could have pulled out their pocket $20 and gave to that man for his water. Come on. And he's a resident? The thing is, you know, I hate to use this, he white, and y'all treating him like trash. So just imagine how we feel, the way y'all do us. But see, if it wasn't for the support of my sisters and brothers, I wouldn't have no support at all. I don't, I don't look for y'all's support because I know what y'all going to do. I know how y'all going to treat us. 50s and 60s, we was treated like trash. But they so lucky I wasn't living during the 50s and 60s because we wouldn't live like that. Malcolm, uh, Malcolm would have loved me. Martin would have shook my hand. All of these people that fought for us, they, they, they sitting down now. Now, we going to have new leaders that's coming up. And these leaders coming up strong. And then we got to start right here. I told you before, we going to start right here. Y'all can see the brothers and sisters building. Well, my bad, my brothers and sisters are building. We're asking you to do something. Stop sitting down. Get up and come on out. I see a handful of y'all out in the community thanking. The other ones, that downtown is not the community. Downtown is where y'all made it look beautiful, made, made it look marvelous. Y'all got to stop. Come uptown, come crosstown, come over to the next town. This is garbage. The way y'all keep on treating these people is great come to y'all. It's coming to your front door. When it come to your front door and start knocking, don't get mad. Don't think that somebody going to save you because ain't nobody going to be able to save you. We're asking for help, to help these children, to, to, to get jobs here in this city. You say this your city. Your father was here, your, your mother was here, and everything else, whoever. So why would you want your city to be trash? Why would you want your city to keep on falling down? Build your city up. You want to impress me? Get that man some money for his water. You want to impress me? Make the city look better, not just downtown. You want to impress me? Stop making Walnut Creek look good and make everybody else look good. Y'all need to be ashamed of yourselves.
Thank you, sir.
Tell them.
Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir. If you will give the clerk your name and address, please.
Hello, gentlemen.
Good evening, sir.
How y'all doing? Um, I was told by my landlord that someone said that the lounge sells alcohol. That is incorrect. The lounge is that video game place that we were talking about a couple months ago. It's not a sweepstakes, it's on, in Berkeley. We do not sell alcohol. I don't want you to take my word for it. I want y'all to come out and support us. We at 207 South Berkeley Boulevard. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? You, you coming to speak?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Um, yes, I'm also here to speak on behalf of the lounge. I kind of take these accusations personal. I've been doing, um, security for about six years, and I watch everything that goes on in there like a hawk. And for us to be a newly established business, already knowing how hard it is in this economy to begin a business and start it, I kind of take these accusations personal, that someone would think we would do something like this in that business, knowing we've just opened. And I don't know how serious, you know, you take the accusation. I'm sure you take them very serious, that a business is, you know, supposedly allegedly illegally selling something, but I just want to reassure you that nothing of, of that type is going on there. And if any of you wanted to come by and check it out, we are open from 10 to 10 anytime. Every part of that building is open for anyone to, to check anytime they need to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sir, sir, sir. I didn't hear anything about that. Did, did inspections come here or anything like that?
Uh, no, it's just.
It was just a rumor?
Yeah, just a rumor that. It was something we felt like needed to be addressed before it got out of.
My landlord came to me and said someone on the council told him that we were selling alcohol. That's why we came out here today to address it.
I didn't say anything because I didn't know anything about that.
I think this is the first most of us ever heard of it.
Actually, I'm the one that went to the landlord because I had, I had heard that, but it wasn't because that was an accusation. When the application was submitted, it did not include alcohol. And, and I know, I actually am a friend of you guys. I know what you're doing, okay? And I wanted to make sure that if, if there was a alcohol issue, that we put it to bed. You guys have come up here and done exactly that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Anybody else want to speak? Anybody else? All right, we, one more. All right, we got, you can come out.
How y'all doing today?
Good, sir, how are you?
I'm doing pretty good. Just want to say a few things, nothing super major. I just want to speak for the community since I do live here and just say, the only way for us to get to a place we've never been is to do things we've never done. Um, we sit back and we come to city council meetings and we notice that you guys pick and choose what you like to comment on, you know what I'm saying? We're talking about morality, life standards of being people. People that's supposed to, you know, look out for one another. People to go praise God supposedly on Sunday, every Sunday, put on their uniforms, looking good. I just want to know, it's like, 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 what are y'all thinking when y'all go home? Like, when you leave this place, like, like, how do you feel when you leave here? I know there has to be some sort of burden on your hearts. I know it is. And man, it just comment, he, he has a heart somewhere down the line, just like everybody else sitting up here right now. The question is, like, literally speaking, do you love yourself? Because how you treat others is a direct reflection of what you do, what you think, what you be around, and what you associate with it. And it comes up time in everybody's life where they have to, like, ask a question, do a self-evaluation, give yourself a goal. If you're not going to come to our communities, at least make your, at least make some sort of public comment noticeable here while we're in the room, not when we're leaving, when you going back to your offices, speaking about the things that shouldn't be spoken about. Like, literally detox your mind. Give yourself something else. That's why we sitting here today. Like, we're, we're almost like begging. Like begging. Know what I'm saying? I'm just, um, it's kinda hard for us to grow up in a community where we feel like we're not loved and we're not wanted. And we all have different issues. We all have different problems or things that we don't see eye to eye with. But the question is, is when are we gonna step outside our comfort zone and discomfort ourselves to get to another place? Like, we love Goldsboro. We're showing you this by coming to these meetings. That we love this city regardless of what you think about how we treat the neighborhoods or anything else. A stereotype, most of the time, is just hearsay. It's time for us to realize that we teaching our kids the wrong things. They do not have the right morals coming on. Like, look at the teenagers dying in the street. It's not just black people's fault. That's hopelessness. If you don't know what the spirit of hopelessness is, please. If you have a Bible, there's a concordance in the back of it. It explains hopelessness. And that's what you see in young people's faces. Even, even your own young people. They're hopeless. They don't believe not just, I'm pretty sure a lot of y'all are parents and don't go, go home in the evenings and don't talk to your loved ones. They need to be talked to. A marriage is something that you have to work on every day. And so is the relationship is with your community. It's the same thing. You have to give your all. Like, but the community shows a direct reflection of how much you really giving. And not just black communities, our communities, man. Every last one of them. But we are suffering and we are begging and asking for help. For the higher source will help us.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna say that I enjoy playing at Goldsboro Municipal Golf Course. And it's a recreation, um, that a lot of people, young and old, of all ages can play. There were some of us, we might not be able to go to the parks or go to other recreations that we can because we can't get out and run and that. I'd like to see it for it can stay affordable to everybody that is there.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I just wanna come up here because I was hoping that, um, and a lot of people said it. The reason why I started the town hall meetings was hopefully to ignite you guys to start going into your own districts, talking to the, the citizens that have concerns, and we have not started that yet. So, one of my questions tonight is, when can we start that? I help you organize shit. I don't, you know, when can we start going into your district and start listening to the people? Because I don't believe you really know where, what district they're in. And just coming up here and they're talking, and they're talking and telling their concerns and we have no idea what district or who they may be talking to. So, I, I wanna put out there at the last town hall meeting, one of the biggest concerns were, uh, we still don't have an idea what district or who represents that district. Except for Mayor Pro Tim Foster and Councilman Williams, they come out a lot to a lot of the events, you know? And I try to invite, you know, we need to start coming out. And also another one of the concerns that hit my inbox today was, uh, H. Rebound Park. Do we have a solution with the flooding? I mean, it is.
We supposed to, we supposed to be working on some renovations with that part. So, that's, that's something that's, that's on the works. We're working on that. And as far as the flooding, I don't know the details of that anymore.
Okay, what, what are our concerns? Yes, sir.
You were talking about town hall meetings. Um, Mr. Broadway and I, tonight, at our work session, asked Mr. Stevens to set us up for a town hall meeting somewhere where our two districts join each other. And try to have it between, I think it's by first week in June if we could.
Cause one, one, one of the, um, when we was at the last town hall meeting, which is this past week, um, they were saying that they was, they was utilizing the fire departments as far as a, a, a point where you can do in each district, so you use that fire departments. And that'd be a good idea, maybe to try that out. Cause the citizens are ready to talk to you. And we're ready to make a difference in our, in our city. We love our city. Grew up here. So, we, we want, like I said, they wouldn't be out here if we want concern and want things to change. Alright, and I see they're moving in the right direction, but now we gotta get together and start putting ideas together. So then we can start making a difference. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wanna speak? Anybody else? Alright, we're gonna close the public comment period.
Got somebody.
Woman, get up here. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening to the mayor, to the members of the, of the council. I came up here because I sit in the meeting this afternoon of the work session, uh, meeting. And I want to speak on the two things. I want to say two things. Number one, the racism or in the minds of the people in Goldsboro is real. I get phone call after phone call talking about their supervisors are calling them niggas. I'm just gonna say it like it is. They say they will not write up a complaint because they afraid that their business, that their names will be come to their supervisors and they will leave jobs. You would be surprised at right here in the city of Goldsboro. Number two, I want to say that when you all come to the work session meeting, I hope you all would get on better unity and be able to communicate better. I didn't feel good in there this afternoon. That's all of my say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And you are happy.
Serge, were you gonna come to speak? You gonna speak? Okay.
My name is Willie Battle. Uh, I appreciate for one thing, we do one thing first there. If y'all would speak in the mic, push the mic to you so you can be heard on the outside. I know no one never told you that, but you, you muffa. But anyway, I serve a thing there. Uh, I was really against the golf course thing because I think y'all acted too quick on making that decision. But you also came back and made a decision about the storm drain. As what Ms. Johnborough was talking about in that area there, which some of y'all don't know anything about, used to be called Edgewood. They ditched that roof all the way from Lincoln Hall on back around to Franklin Street. Andrew, that ditch never been cleaned out. And I know that, and that been in, in my lifetime there, almost seventy years. Now, as for my area, where the drain that fall, that drained from John Street back toward Isla Street, Elm Street, Olivia Lane there, I had to stop the code enforcement, ask them about cleaning the drain. But y'all want to go and charge a drain cleaners fee? And y'all haven't done anything yet to try to, uh, eliminate the problem. I think you should clean the drain and then start charging. Not charge before you do the drain. See, now you go sit there and spend, uh, several thousands of dollars there buying equipment. And you go put it in another area and they'll, they'll never get used. So I think drain, this drain money that y'all tried to gather is probably to benefit the golf course. That's where, that's where it's going. See, you, you coming up, it's just like the last one, you just passed this forty, forty million there, and we still trying to find out where the sidewalk going. Nobody said anything about the sidewalk yet. See, only thing come back afterward, but nobody have anything to actually come up and say anything about anything. And they say, okay, we're going to pass it. The multiplexes and all this other stuff there. Moving personnel around, uh, uh, in the area there from one, from one state to another there to help cover costs somewhere else. I don't think you should be doing that. If you can't afford it, leave it. Give it up. Don't go and charge somebody a fee because you losing money. Let it stay there and build the other way. You go and buy all this equipment, you know you didn't have no money. Why buy the equipment? Why? Why you go and buy stuff you don't have money for? And the other thing is, what, uh, we're saying about the, uh, the chief. Twelve year education. Name one, if you can just think of one black person that you would've hired at a twelve, at a twelve, uh, grade education. One, any, anyone you want me to think of. I left Goldsboro, went in the military there almost over forty some years ago. And I come back here and I got some friends that also didn't come back here, done retired from up north and came here. Now they kinda wish they had've kept their place where they were instead of coming back here. You have nothing to offer. We got too many bars downtown, no job. You, a restaurant everywhere. And nobody can make no money. Then the city don't want to pay no money, but they want to increase the tax. The stifling money that you got, some of the employees will be getting, what, one to two percent? And it go to select people? What kind of, what kind of business that? You just have certain people that go say, okay, if I start a job there, I've been in the job two year there. I get a stifling there for three percent there, and the one that been there for twenty years can't get one percent. That's bad business.
Thank you, sir.
But we need to do better. Cause we can't do no better there, we can give y'all a blue tick or, or pink slip. And that's where it's looking right about now.
Thank you, sir.
And the other thing is sure, we got too many people that pretend to be one thing that they're not.
Alright.
I understand you want to run me off. Now, I know I'm stepping on toes.
No, you're not.
I know, yes, I am.
You can come back any time you want to, but you're three minutes early.
Yeah, sure, it's three minutes, Judge.
You can come back.
You just all wanted to hear it.
Sir.
Corey Scott, Mike, talking about diversity.
We're done.
Okay.
Thank you. Please sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else want to speak? Anybody else like to speak? We'll get to everybody. It's time just to know her.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
My entire, I do believe in professionalism, but I did not intend to speak. But I was moved to. My name is Karina Akison. I recently moved back here from Pembroke, um, where I stayed there for four years in college. But, um, I've lived here the majority of my life. So, um, I'm not gonna give any concerns or issues. Actually, I would like to encourage you. So, um, I'm introducing myself to you in this way, cause you'll see more of me as I get involved and wanna express concerns. But I do appreciate those, such as Mr. Alan, also Mr. Foster, who I've seen out in the community as I've been attending Mr. Dawson's, um, town hall meetings and stuff like that. Um, so oftentimes, we get offended by the things to which we should listen to. A lot of conversations and topics are very uncomfortable to hear, especially when we don't understand. So, um, as you go throughout your day and when you go home, first, as someone was saying about evaluating yourself, in order to be in these positions, the love of money, the love of self, the love of titles, the love of greed, it won't flourish in these positions. However, the love of yourself, as in positively confidence wise, the love of people and the love of your community is the best way to accommodate your position. Now, whenever you make changes in the city, ask yourself, who does it accommodate? And who does it not accommodate? If the decision you make do not accommodate everyone, then have you truly made progress in your city? So I urge you, not gonna discuss color. You're aware of the discrepancies. You're aware of the issues that we have personally and as a community as a whole. You are aware, whether you speak on it or not. And even if it does not pertain to you, because you're in this position, it pertains to you. So I urge you all to be encouraged when you go home to your wives, whoever your significant others are, and they build you up. As a citizen, I would like to do that. For what you have done, thank you. For what you are doing, thank you. For what you have the positive mind to do, I appreciate it. And for what you have not done, I urge you to better yourself. I urge you to do more. And I urge you to be where you are not. Because while uptown Goldsboro looks well, there are areas that do not look well. So all of Goldsboro, if any part of Goldsboro does not look well, does any of it look well? So I urge you all to use your positions for the community and not self. And to not only accommodate those who are in your league or in your status. So I appreciate you for what you do. And make sure you take out the time to listen to the things that are expressed to you. Because we do care and we appreciate all of your time and use your time wisely.
Thank you, ma'am. Good job. Alright, uh, yes, sir.
Ray Lippert, five oh five, three, right around. Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Um, my name is Ray Lippert. I've been employed with Wayne County Public Schools. I'm also a high school golf coach for the past eight years. I'm a registered voter and resident and a city taxpayer here in Goldsboro. Um, I'd like to thank Mr. Jody Dean back there, all the Parks and Rec staff, and the city for allowing the kids and community the opportunity to learn and grow in the game of golf. We, meaning the city of Goldsboro, have had many junior golfers come through Goldsboro Municipal. Many of these students have gone on and accomplished lofty goals. Several played at collegiate level and others have entered into golf management or maintenance programs in our state, specifically NC State. The opportunity for these kids, starting right here in this city and right down the street at that little golf course, a hundred percent of them were brought there by their granddad or a family member. Um, and that first time they went on that golf course, you know, it changed for them. You know, they, they loved the game. So, the love of the game and the spending quality of time with family and friends isn't a central part of Goldsboro Municipal Golf Course. The golf course is a service to our community, just like any other park or anything that we do here in the city. Raising the fees will not promote the game of the course. It will only, uh, be detrimental to the growth of it. I do understand it is finance. I get that. I also understand that without non-resident memberships, whatever the percentage may be, or some, um, like the gentleman spoke about, some of the, uh, false records or whatever allegedly is out there, uh, it will have an adverse effect on the future of the golf course. We're fully aware of that. So we owe it to our seniors, military friends and families, and most importantly, the children of our community to leave the fees where they stand. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna speak? Anybody else? Alright, we're gonna close the public hearing and we're gonna move to our consent agenda.
Mayor and council, you did not discuss item O on the consent agenda. Jimmy's prepared to do that. I think that will be pretty quick. We'll just make sure you understand.
Item one. You have one minute.
Item O is a property lease name change request from Wayne Food Initiative to Little Washington Growing Group. Um, back in, um, two thousand nine, the, um, Wayne Food Initiative approached the city of Goldsboro about acquiring some lot, well not acquiring, but leasing some property off of Washington Park. Um, and that was Wayne, Wayne Food Initiative. Um, the lease agreement at that time was for one dollar. Um, the mayor and city clerk executed a lease agreement for four parcels of land within Washington Park to Wayne Food Initiative, which was executed by the mayor on July ninth, two thousand nine. Now, Ms. Cheryl Austin, a member of the Wayne Food Initiative, is requesting that the name of the current lease agreement, Wayne Food Initiative, be changed to Little Washington Growing Group. The Little Washington Growing Group is an active partner of the Wayne Food Initiative and has the same mission and has become a five oh one, three C group. They have contacted the USDA office for help in getting a removable greenhouse on the property that is currently leased from the city. Uh, they need the Wayne Food Initiative, um, name changed to Little Washington Growing Group in order to get that greenhouse. The staff recommends that council adopt the attached resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a revised lease agreement for the four parcels of land within Washington Park to Little Washington Growing Group as requested by Ms. Austin. The recommendation is by motion, accept the recommendation of the staff and adopt the attached resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a revised lease changing the name from Wayne Food Initiative to Little Washington Growing Group.
Any questions of Jimmy? Thank you, Jimmy. Alright, so with that, we got the consent agenda for approval.
I move to adopt the consent agenda items D through O.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please, ma'am.
Mayor Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor President Foster.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Broadway.
Yes.
Councilman Stevens.
Yes.
Councilman Brannan.
Yes.
Councilman Grant.
Yes.
Alright, the consent agenda is approved. Next, we got items requiring individual action, CU six seventeen, well traveled beer.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we need a motion to excuse Councilmember.
Make a move. A second.
Uh, any discussion? All clear, say aye. Alright.
You're excused. Thank you, sir.
Item P, CU 617, John Hosh, Well-Tribled Beer, southwest corner of South Center Street and Chestnut Street, is a place of entertainment with ABC permits. It's an amendment of the previously approved permit, condition use permit. The applicant now intends to renovate a portion of the 1,674 square feet remaining first floor area facing West Chestnut Street for an additional seating and storage. The submitted floor plan for the expansion shows seating for thirty-four people. Existing operations include beverage, shelving, and display areas seating for twenty-five people, bathrooms, and a bar. The expansion of the seating would allow for a total of fifty-nine people. At the public hearing held on April 17, no one appeared to speak either for or against this request. The planning commission at that meeting on April 24, 2017, recommended approval of the condition use permit amendment as requested. The recommendation would be by motion, accept the recommendation of the planning commission and one, adopt in order of approving the amendment of the condition use permit for a place of entertainment with ABC permits to allow the expansion of existing bar lounge operation, and two, approve the site and landscape plans detailing the expansion as submitted.
Any questions? You have a motion in front of you.
Second.
Well, somebody's got to make the motion.
I'm making a motion.
You're making a motion for approval?
I'm making a motion.
Any discussion? All of us here, raise your right hand. Anybody opposed? Let's ensure. All right, now, we're gonna move to item Q, which is state electric, and I need to be excused.
You make a motion to repuce yourself.
I'm just taking that motion. Bring David back in.
Item Q, CU 717, State Electric Supply Company, the property is located on the west side of North Jaw Street between Vine Street and Holly Street. The applicant requests a condition use permit to allow the outside storage of goods or materials in conjunction with the contractor's office and retail supply business. The site consists of nine one thousand six hundred and eighty-eight square feet. It's fronted on North Agenda Street, West Vine, North Jaw Streets, CS Railroad, right away to the butts of property along the Northern George property line. Monroe Hawk, where a company currently occupies the property, forty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven square feet of the existing building located within this zoning district. Another forty-nine thousand seven seventeen square feet of building space is currently available for leasing on general business, and thus along North Jaw Street. The city's unified development code requires the following, a storage area shall be screened from public view by eight-foot-high solid fence. Fence may be reduced to six feet if items of storage do not exceed five feet in height. No loading or unloading of materials shall occur outside of the fence area. Materials shall not be stacked so as to be visible from any public road right of way or adjoining property owner. The applicant proposes to use five thousand nine hundred and eighty-five square feet of the vacant portion of the building for office and retail use, and thirty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-six square feet for warehouse storage for a combined area of forty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-one square feet. A total of twenty paid parking and strike parking spaces are required for the proposed use, including one handicap space. A total of twenty-five parking spaces will be provided for the operation of the business. The planning commission at that meeting held on April 24, 2017, recommended approval of the condition use permit and submitted development plans. The recommendation would be by motion, accept the recommendation of the planning commission and one, adopt in order of approving a condition use permit to allow the outside storage of goods or materials in conjunction with a contractor's office and retail supply business, and two, approve the submitted development plans detailing the operation. Here are photographs of the site.
Any questions?
Any question? CU 717, State Electric Company, anybody like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the planning department and staff's recommendation.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
All right, with that, we've got the city manager report.
Mayor and Council, two quick items. One, I've shared a copy of this magazine, it's in your box, we received those today, but it just features WA Foster Center on the Recreation statewide magazine, and it's got a nice article about Goldsboro Parks and Rec, and so it's at least some good recognition statewide for our community, just want to make you aware of that. The second item, I do want to mention that due to our recent downtown improvements, Goldsboro was recognized by the National Main Street Center at their national conference in Pennsylvania as a runner-up with the One to Watch Award for a great American Main Street. And I think, again, good recognition for Goldsboro in a different setting, so just to share those two items with you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Attorney?
The report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we got three proclamations. The first one is the coats and ties off proclamation against the number of Broadway, you're gonna do that?
This is one I'm ready to read. Coats and ties off, whereas southeastern regions of United States and especially our Sunbelt State experience hot, humid temperatures in the summer months of May through September, whereas soaring temperatures will soon reach the Carolinas and more specifically the Goldsboro area, whereas during this time, all citizens are encouraged to be good stewards of our energy sources, whereas while trying to keep their cool by wearing lightweight suits and ties, all men continue to swelter in the hot, humid weather, whereas it's become tradition that we exchange our coats and ties for common sense and no longer deny ourselves some small degree of comfort and dignity. Therefore, Chuck Allen, City of Goldsboro, by virtue of his powers vested in this office, does proclaim reason above custom and urge all Goldsboro citizens to doff their coats and ties for the duration of summer effective May 1, 2017 until September 30, 2017.
Thank you, sir. With that, we've got the peace officers Memorial Day proclamation. Mr. Ham, you were gonna read that?
Yes. Peace Officers Memorial Day proclamation, whereas the Congress and the President of the United States has designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week, and whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the city of Goldsboro play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Goldsboro, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and whereas members of the Goldsboro Police Department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression, and whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agency of the city of Goldsboro consistently provide a vital public service. Now, therefore, I, Chuck Allen, Mayor of the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, call upon the citizens of the city of Goldsboro and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 15 through 21, 2017 as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which everyone may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past, present, and future, for that matter, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community, and in doing so, have established for themselves an admirable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens to observe May 15, 2017 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. And witness, therefore, I, unto, set my hand and affix the seal of the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, this eighth day of May, 2017.
Thank you, sir. Next, we got Municipal Clerks Week proclamation, and before I read this, I do want to tell you all, we have one of the best clerks in the whole state of North Carolina, she does awesome work for us, and that's Melissa, and then her backup lawyer, they do unbelievable work, I see it every day in what they do for us in our city hall, and I certainly appreciate, and I think all the council appreciates what y'all do. So, with that, I'll read this. Municipal Clerks Week proclamation, the office of the municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local governance, is throughout the world, and the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public service. The office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens and the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels. Municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality in an equal service to all. The municipal clerk serves as an information center on functions of local government and community. Municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of the state, private, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishment of the office of municipal clerk, therefore Chuck Allen, Mayor of City of Goldsboro, do recognize the week of May 7 through 13, 2017, as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our city clerk Melissa Corser, our deputy city clerk Laura Guest, and all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their dedication to the communities they represent. So, we do thank you again, Melissa, for what you and Laura do, you mean a lot to us. So, with that, we'll move to council member comments, and I'll start with you, Mr. Acock.
You know, I've heard a lot of things tonight, and I agree with a lot of them, with few I don't agree with, but you give me a lot of food for thought, and I appreciate your comments, and believe me, I do take them seriously.
Mr. Dean?
Well, I just say ditto to Mr. Acock's comments.
Okay, Mr. Foster?
I just want to say that our city manager's decisions have nothing to do with the council's decision. Whatever decision he makes, that's on him. I don't agree with a lot of them, I've spoken out about them, I don't agree with the man not getting paid his hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Personally, right now, I don't mind donating twenty-five dollars to it, because I just believe it was wrong. I think we've had a lot of sewer and issue problems here in Goldsboro, we've spoken about them, it's time to address them. It wasn't handled right, we also had another lady that I felt like it wasn't handled right, that's my personal opinion. He chose not to pay him, so that was his choice. As far as employees and other things going on throughout the city, I don't agree with them as well. Like I said, that's my personal choice, but at that same time, the citizens need to know that that's his opinion, that's his choice, not ours. Some of us think differently, some of us feel differently, so that's it, thank you.
Mr. Stevens?
I don't even know where to start. I will say this. I'll take, I even take this thing off, you can hear me even better. I guess I don't even know where to start. I think the biggest thing is, is that to know, when you're speaking about African Americans, you speak to all African Americans, no matter where or where they came from, you're speaking, when you're speaking about an African American, you're speaking about all of us. So, to be unincluded, and that makes me feel pretty sad. Did I have a different life than some of you? Yes, I did. Did I go through school and have a grandmother and a mother and a father that was a principal in Tech Five in the Army? Yes, I did. They hone in and make me and force me to go through school and finish and not drop out? Yes, they did. Did I learn something from it? Yes, I did, because I found out Goldsboro is just a small little speck in the world that is so much greater than this small little community, and there's so many great things that you can do if you choose to, and you have to choose to do these things, not wait for somebody to help you or give you a handout. Yes, we want help, and yes, we need help, but it is also up to you to figure out what in God's name you want to do, and you gotta get up and you want your education, you get up every day, seven o'clock, and you go there and you stay at school until three or four o'clock, and if you're not getting helped by your teacher, you sit right there in her room or his room until she, before she leaves, and say, hey, madam or sir, I need your help. I don't understand what I am doing. And that is the only way I've ever gotten further in my education. So, by yes, those are the things that I did to achieve the life that I was able to achieve. So, I'm, I feel very saddened by some of the things that were said, but, you know, we gonna, we gonna keep moving, and I just pray that the city will continue to grow and we will continue to flourish, and all these things that everyone has spoken about, jobs and more education, we gonna fight to, we can't fight no more, and so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mitch Broadway?
I would like to thank everybody for their comments, and we did hear what your comments were, and we heard them from both sides of the bench, or the aisle is probably the best way to say, but I spent a long time in a really good organization, and I found out that that organization works better when we all pull together as a team, not pulling apart from each other. The way you create teamwork is to talk to each other, not scream at each other, but talk to each other. Let's hope that we can establish that dialogue, let's hope we can all talk together, because just like we said in ring call, we all are little green monsters and we all bleed red. And I think that's just what we've got to start thinking about in Goldsboro at this point in time. And thank you for your comments, and we heard them, and I didn't agree with all of them, but we heard them, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, I just want to say, action speaks louder than words. We know our needs here, we know our kids need to be working this year, we know that we can create plenty of jobs. Unfortunately, I don't think some of us understand the plight of our kids having the opportunity to work. It's so important just to keep them busy. So, what I'm asking, call all of these gentlemen up here and tell them how important it is that we create more jobs, because I don't under, you know, it's gonna be knocking at someone's door eventually, like the man said, you know? Now, we don't need, we already had one murder the other day. Are we gonna start our summer off with continued murders? How do we defeat that? We gotta give kids something to look forward to. We have to keep them busy, you know, we have to give them something to put on their resume. I'm tired of saying it, I want to see some action. So, all of these gentlemen, call them and let them know how important it is. I'm not saying they don't understand, but you can make them understand a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I just do want to kind of, I guess, echo whatever I said, we do appreciate your comments, we do listen to your comments, and I think we do take your comments to heart, and I know that we are working to make this city better. Sometimes when I come in here every other Monday, I wonder if we're making any progress, but I know in my heart that we are making progress, I know that things are getting better and we are making progress. I do want to say, and I want to remind everybody, that we are stronger together, and we need to work and figure out how to stay together. There were some positive comments made tonight that we can work off of, a lot of you and some of you have left that I have individually worked with on various projects, and we're building relationships, and that's what we need to do, we gotta keep building relationships, and we gotta keep trying to move this city forward to make it inclusive for everybody, which is what our goal is, we want to make it better for everybody. So, I think we get the picture, but it's a matter of we've got to build and have better trust, better relationships, and better communications, okay? And I mean, you know, I'm open to meet anybody, anytime, anywhere, I don't think there's anybody that can tell you that I wasn't willing to meet with them, I don't think anybody can tell you that I wouldn't go to their meeting, and so we're all here to make a difference. I'm here for one reason, and that is because I want to make this city better. This city's been good to me, and I want to do what I can do to make this city better. And I think everybody here is for that same reason, and I do agree that there is a population in our city that has been left behind, and it, you know, it didn't happen overnight, and we're not gonna fix it overnight, but the biggest thing I can say and ask you is that we stay together, and we work together, and we communicate with each other, because if we do that, I think we can really all make a difference, and I think we're all willing to do what we can to make the city better. So, with that, we stand adjourned, and I think everybody...
We do a closed session, items are...
No, I'm tired.
Okay.
No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, property acquisition, economic development, but that's totally...
I need a, we need a motion to go into closed session.
I need a, we need a motion to go into closed session for property acquisition and economic development?
Yes, sir.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. You've got to raise your right hand. All right, we are standing, we're going to close this to go into closed session. Thank you, everybody, for coming, okay?